Let's begin with the flag of the United States of America and to look forward to standing one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See what we got here. Yeah, you can have this one. There's a lot of reading here, I'm sure you'll love it. Yeah, from this. Baseline document before? Okay, call this meeting to order. Any addition or deletion?
So Rose Smith requested to be on, pre-requested earlier in the meeting, and with that, we should be able to remove the cemetery cleanup item from down at the bottom, and perhaps the town hall auditorium cooling system from down later in the meeting as well. And a couple of things, just appointment things to go over under old business, but nothing else official. And the meeting minutes?
What do we think of the minutes?
April 4th are the ones that need feedback and approval.
Everybody love them?
Yes.
Yeah. All second.
Desta?
And Perry.
Perry.
I just liked them.
You just loved them.
How could you not?
Good reading to do.
Yes.
Allen favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carried, thank you. Rose?
Thank you, Champion Beecher. So, thank you for moving me up on the schedule. The first thing I'll start with is kind of short and simple. I'll need to be on the agenda again next week for the tree at the cemetery. I contacted Green Mountain Power. They contacted Davies right away, Davy Tree Service, and they looked at it last Tuesday. So I haven't gotten a report back yet, but they took a look at it. So that's where that's at. If I don't have a phone call back, I'll call them before the next meeting so that you will know, and we'll know where we're at with that. And then, I understand Judy got in touch with Perry. Refresh the name of them?
Uh, Bill, it's Bill Lawson, I guess, from Longford.
Okay.
He's actually the only one that responded.
Okay.
Out of all the places we called.
He's the only one that called you back?
Yeah. So, and he did come and look at it, but he didn't, he hasn't got a quote together yet. And he, he said, "Do not turn the ones on that are there because they're plugged right full." He said, "They'll burn out if..." But... So he's supposed to be putting together a quote.
Okay.
You know, and like everybody, he's probably way behind or whatever, so... But he did look at everything. He said that seventy-five percent of the work is already in there.
Okay.
So, basically, we just need the unit and the plumbing to over into the unit inside there.
Okay.
Because he can wire it right into the same box down back. So, I'm just waiting. It's a waiting game now.
Cause I, I did talk to the guy Jake that put the one in the sewer treatment plant, and he said he'd be willing to come and look at it.
I did, I did mention that. I thought of that. I was like, "Well, why?" I was like crazy.
So, I will-
So have, if Jake wants to get ahold of me-
I will, uh, what I'll do is I'll send, I'll send you his contact information and I'll swap that before the night's over.
That did cross my mind here, just actually today.
Right. I hadn't talked to him, and then I'd, I'd been and talked to him. I've been in contact with him this week, and I said, "Hey, by the way, you know, we got this," and he said, "Yeah, I got..." He's available to look at it.
Okay, yeah. That's a good idea, yeah. So, and in the meantime, if someone else gets back to me, High Tech, they said, "No, they weren't even interested," so.
Yeah.
Everybody's so busy that-
Right, yeah, sure, no doubt about it.
I'd like them to give me a call back and say, "Hey, no," or whatever, but we'll go with it and see what we get, so.
And I'm sure Judy would, if it's a daytime phone call issue, I'm sure she would help out with that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they can reach me all day long on my cell, yeah, anytime, so. So, contact's not an issue, it's just, I don't know. Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so if I could be on the agenda again next time, that'd be great. Great, thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Announcements? How good. Reports? Anything from Nancy? Got anything for us tonight, Nancy?
I have so much.
Okay.
Not really. But, first item is the camping trailer update. It's still there. We did send a violation also to the property owner. Jennifer has some more details on kind of the next steps from a health officer standpoint there. We do know that the property is under contract, so there may be, well, I know for a fact there's a push now by the homeowner to get things cleaned up. He's called me multiple times to find out what the town can do, and I've told him basically, we've exhausted everything we can do. It's up to him to push it forward. Um, let me see, I've had, had an inquiry from a residence about establishing a tier one indoor cannabis grow. And then I had a report of an unpermitted business report, which I investigated and responded back to the complainant with a letter, and also to the property owner, because the complainant was just a renter on the property. I also followed up on, there was a report of a construction yard, unpermitted being used. I spoke with the property owner there. He indicated to me that, in fact, that business is in the process of being moved to a different location. So I didn't think there was any point in issuing a violation or even asking him to let a conditional use permit, since within the next month or two, he's going to be changing locations, which will require him to get a conditional use permit anyway. Had received two separate subdivision inquiries.
Pardon me?
Ask you.
I attended the DRB organizational meeting, and I issued one additional permit since our last meeting, which takes a year to date to five. But there's a lot of activity of people coming in requesting permits for new builds and additions. That's it.
Alright, does anybody have any questions for Nancy? Thank you very much, Nancy.
Do you have my department's, their my information now?
Go ahead.
Um, well, after getting updated information from Nancy, I did call the state again. They are offering to get involved at this time. They are going to call the landlord, and they, they said either today or tomorrow, and they are planning to visit the site. So I've offered to go with them. If, when that happens, I will let you know, but that's where we are right now.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody having questions for Jennifer? Okay. Alright, thank you very much, ladies. Planning commission?
Nope, not this time.
Not this week, okay. Road foreman?
Yes. Uh, hold on one sec. Alright, um... Dale sent me a message. So for the foreman's report, they've finished the first phase of Warren Switch Road Entrance Project. Removed winter maintenance equipment from trucks and cleaned and prepped them for summer. They've cold patched potholes along the blacktop, stockpiled more gravel, started grading roads, and in the next couple of weeks, they'll push forward with grading as weather allows. They also plan to truck more gravel and will be starting to prepare for the Wait Hill Road project. This road will be closed on the Route 30 end for blocks of time as they progress through different phases of the project. So that's the report there. I've also heard that things are working out well with Brad, the new hire, and-
Are you allowed to call him Brad?
Yeah, so he, I think it's Brad. Uh, I asked the same question today. I was like, "Is it Brad?" So, yeah, so Brad, I think is going, everything's going well. He's learning. So I think there's just, you know, it's a time of transition as Dale's learning his role, and then he's got two new people as well. So there's just a lot of transition. We also, Dale and I got together last week, and we completed the grant applications which were due on the fifteenth for the Agency of Transportation. So with the help of Patrick Wilson, we submitted two applications. One is for Structures and one was for Blacktop. So we are hoping to get, we'll hear back on those. The Structures grant is for this school street bridge. So Dale received a quote back to resurface it and to also take down the paint on the metal structure and then to have that repainted. So it's a pretty robust project, and it's a bit expensive, so it's something that the board will have to determine if we're really in the market to do, but we wanted to make sure to get the application in so that we could have our hat in the ring. And Patrick had said that if we don't get it this year, it's good that we're putting ourselves out there so that they know that we're interested in it. I just wanted to share that with you. So, the total project cost, so it was for $200,000 is the amount that's available for that grant. The total project cost for, that we've been quoted was for $299,925. So this is a matching grant. It's a ten percent match, but with the amount of in-kind work that would be provided, we would probably make all that come together. The other thing that Patrick had mentioned was that you have thirty months to complete that, so it would go from this fiscal year into the next. So we would potentially have two years to be able to pay for it if we were to get it and if it's something that we wanted to do. But there's a whole state inspection report that happens with all of our different bridges in the community. So right now, the state is saying that this bridge is okay, but it needs attention because what's happening is the paint is coming off and the blacktop is deteriorating, so the steel is exposed and it's compromising the integrity of the bridge. So there was another option to potentially expand the bridge and make it wider, but that was like a $500,000 project. So we'll see. We just put ourselves out there for that. And the other one, the paving project, was for Route 153, and so that was just to do a general resurfacing. So that quote for that was $150,800, which seemed to be well within the scope.
What section is that?
It's for the entire, right? No?
I was, I was just gonna ask you another question before we even went there, just so I can understand it correctly.
Yes.
When you said it's a ten percent match on the first phase of the project?
Yeah.
That was 300,000?
Yeah.
Excuse me. But the grant is for 200?
Yes.
So we'd have to come up with 120,000 if we wanted to move ahead with that?
That's right.
Right. So it's not, they're not gonna, they're, regardless, it's capped at 200,000, and we gotta come up with ten percent of that?
That's correct.
Whether we go with the $300,000 one or the $500,000?
That's right.
Right.
So.
I, I thought, when you were describing that, that the in-kind work done by the town would defray that $300,000 estimate?
The twenty, the $20,000 probably.
Possibly, but I'm not sure what the town's gonna do on a project like that. You know, I'm not sure what we're, what we can do.
Yeah, well, a lot of what came with the quote was like a large amount of the, I mean, they break down the entire quote for the project, and there's like $10,000 in traffic control. And there's a lot of line items that it kind of seemed like might not be entirely necessary to pursue, if we were to pursue with the project, pursue the project. But when speaking with Patrick, we were in between meetings, and when speaking with Patrick, it seemed like the right move to just move forward with letting him know that we were interested in doing this. And he said that it could be possible, you know, to split the cost up over two fiscal years.
And if we are granted the, I mean, if, if we do get the grant, we don't have to take it?
We're not committed to the project.
You know, if we're not positioned to follow through.
And in the meetings that I've had with them in the past, them being the different entities that offer these grant programs, they said that it's, you know, it's wise for them to be aware of what these projects are that the different municipalities are interested in, so that year to year, they can just gauge what people are trying to do. So.
Yeah, I did talk to Craig when he was down there, and they were looking at it one morning down there. The bridge is in fairly good shape, but it does need to be touched up, so to prolong its life.
Yeah, and the big issue is currently the met, the steel is painted in lead paint. So a large portion of that is that when the paint-
That's the cost.
So that's the big cost. So what's going to happen is-
A pavement process.
Yeah, and it's directly over the medway. So they're gonna have to put together a pretty robust scaffolding setup to be able to catch all the lead paint when they remove it and then to repaint it. So that's why it's so significant. So that's the big cost of it. So, I was also surprised and was like, "Why can't we just paint it?" But so far, it turns out it's not so simple.
Frank, you have a question?
Is, is it paving for the entire 153 or are we just painting the bridges?
Oh, so paving was for 153. When filling it out, I was, when I was talking with Dale, he said it's the paving project along 153, so.
Yeah, and they're two separate grants, so you apply for them separately?
There's $200,000.
The concern with West Pollock is that paving, pavement has outgrown the sidewalks substantially, and it, all the gravel and everything for winter time is up there and covers the sidewalks. And that was an issue in the West Pollock planning discussions that-
The road's higher than the sidewalk?
Much higher than the sidewalk. When I was growing up, the road was, the road was this much lower than the sidewalk. Now it's here, and if you go even by Bruce's, you see my, by Bruce's there, it's, the road's higher. And you had to do some work there. If you put another layer of asphalt in there, you're gonna be growing the road over the sidewalk more. And then you go in front of Folgers Old Building, and look at the firehouse there.
I don't believe it's going down that far this year.
We talked about going from the monument north to Route 30, right?
Yeah.
Not from the monument south.
Or it's like Bob's, you know, stop and doing a section like from Bob's place?
Up to, up about to, okay.
Well, like in front of my place, the asphalt-
You're not getting any-
The asphalt, you can just grind it up and put it someplace else.
Yeah.
Just lower it, right? So the sidewalk is higher than the road. Right now, the road is higher than the gravel it fills in at the base of that wall there, and it's been growing every year. And it's hap, and it's growing even if I further south.
Right, but we're not doing that part of the road. This pertains to different-
Not at all, that part.
This is a different section of the road.
Yeah, and I have a question. Is, are the new sidewalks in the revitalization plan for over there?
We're a long ways off of that.
We got a draft coming up, so, yeah. Good, good point.
It'll, one may wash the other one, so.
Yeah, good point.
You know, within the next ten years or whatever.
The draft is coming out, which can be modified for that, and then we can use the draft as a border.
Okay. So we're good?
I have more.
What else?
But there's more. So the Grants and Aid Program for the fiscal year of 2024 is coming up, and this is the one that talks about the hydrologically connected municipal roads. So the letter of intent is to participate is due on May 5th. So I got that email, and I just figured, I talked to Dale about it, and he said that it would be, he's not quite sure necessarily what, he hasn't wrapped his arms around what that would be, but it would be good to get the letter of intent in so that they know we're interested. Pollock is eligible for $12,000 this year for that program, and I think there's a, I think the total, it's like there's a three percent match maybe, but we're eligible for $12,000. So I was hoping if you were all supportive of that, I filled it out and just need a signature so I can send that in so that V-Trans knows that we're interested.
Okay.
Do you want to do that?
I think that, with that, motion?
We don't need a motion, do we, for that? I'll make a motion.
Probably just to apply. We don't really need to because we're not spending any money.
So there's no, this isn't even the application. This is just to tell them that we want to- So this is so that they can get a gauge of how many people are interested so that they can know with money in the till. So it's just, somebody needs to sign it.
Yeah, whether it will be a lesser amount or more amount, if everybody wants it or not.
Yes. So, and then I know at the last meeting, we had said that, and Bob and Rich did look over the Agency of Transportation paperwork, but I talked again with Patrick, and he felt like just general practice, it's a good idea for the whole select board to be aware. So the first thing is the TA 65, which is the request for reimbursement for the bank stabilization project. So everybody just needs to sign that. That's to request that we get that $100,000 back. Everything else has been submitted. I just need to send that in with all of your signatures. And the next couple of things, this year, we have to resubmit. So a lot of this stuff hasn't been submitted since 2019, and generally, they're supposed to be done annually. So we are making up a little bit for lost time. Thanks. The first one is the Certificate of Highway Mileage, so it's just acknowledging that all of our highway mileage that we have in stock is still the same. So again, just letting the state know what we have down. The next one is our annual financial plan. So Dale and Patrick did this together, but this just talks about our annual financial plan as it pertains to the roads. That also will help us. That document is essential for if we ever have to apply for emergency grant funding. And the last one is our Certificate of Compliance for Town Road and Bridge Standards and Network Inventory. So just lets them know that we've adopted the standards, and we agree to be up to date on our highway network inventory. Oh, and then the Agency of Transportation also does like to have all of your contact information. Are you all okay with me giving your phone numbers to the Agency of Transportation? I'm not sure what they'll call you for, but maybe they will. Okay, thanks.
Is there any update on that building that they, know they own now? That is Vermont DOJ agents, is that the same people that own the, the shipping building in the Cape Canaveral?
What building you're talking about, Frank?
Trail rail trail. That, is that the same entity or is that? There was gonna be some digging in on the-
No, yes. They, it's the same company, but different people, and you haven't heard back from them, right?
Um, I-
What's your ear?
I have heard a little bit, and they're still, they're still digging, basically. Yeah, no one can find the deed to that property, so.
Anything else in the road report? Everything's alright? Leon's getting some material out of there? Okay, he talked, he went through the process and stuff, so, okay. Yep, and what else? Do we have all our trucks back on the road or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 'cause I knew we had a death pump or something was bad on the Mack for a while, but-
Yeah, everything's up and running now.
Everything's, everything's running again. UNC, they use the old Green International, they have been drying material?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
I've got, I've got a question. I was just wondering if, I know it hasn't been done in a couple of years about a sweeper, if they were gonna sweep the streets or not.
Just we used, yeah, we used to get that.
It's been, it's been a couple of years, and I know the, the place where we did it there, they changed hands, I believe, just before the last time. I was just curious if we'd thought about doing that or not.
I, I really don't pay attention when I'm cruising through town, but usually the village centers have been swept in, in the past, but.
Yeah, I didn't.
Does, do they need doing?
I think they do, but it's just, there's a lot of, a lot of gravel on them.
Well, they used to do the school park and that as well. I don't know, I, I haven't paid attention.
I think Dale would know who that company was because he, they were there and he'd been around them so long. I don't, you know, it's just something maybe to look into, so. Or if we can find somebody local, it's just, you know.
Yeah, they used to, they used to come in with the, just come in with a big sweeper and stuff like that.
Yeah, suck it all up and be gone.
I hadn't noticed.
Yeah, I mean, it used to make it, the village, what do you think, Frank? Is there a lot of dirt on the, on the blacktop there?
Now that the road's higher than the sidewalk, they're in good shape.
It'll wash off.
It all ends up on the sidewalk, right, Frank?
Just distract them with a bird flying by, and he swirrs over and sucks that up.
No, it's, I just was curious.
I, I remember now, I remember it used to come through, and they, they do it in the village center, look pretty good. They do it by Mack and stuff too, right?
Yeah.
But, uh-
They'd run around the school park and that.
Well, what made me think of it, I was looking at the front of this building out here and how dirty and dusty it is.
Yeah.
So I was just curious.
I'll ask Dale.
Could mention it to Dale and see?
He may remember the name of, or there might be a card in the desk up there of that company. I never did. I saw the guy once back when Keith was there, and that was it.
I think they were out of New York State, weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They had a sweeper, and it came through and-
It's like some, what the hell?
The same folks that own Progressive Motorsports.
It may be, it may be.
Hudson Falls, do you know Mike Digo over in Hartford?
At least, maybe get a price on it. If it's outrageous, you know. And maybe somebody local with a sweeper, I know.
Might be able to find out if we can, but I think Dale probably-
Or a blower on a rainy day.
Yeah, right.
I did see Pulte doing their sidewalks in the rain there yesterday with their blower.
Really?
They pull it behind their tractor, little tractor. Blowing it straight down, and it's just, so.
Sandblasting everything?
Yeah.
So, okay, let's see, one last thing. Have we thought anymore about a new dump truck?
It's on the radar.
It's on the radar.
We haven't made any calls recently. We had, we asked Western Star, we asked for a quote, Freightliner, Mack, and International, and we didn't hear back from any of them. But I think that, you know, we can, we can reach out to them again and, and get some quotes.
One of the things that I'm thinking about, Keith, Keith had figured it out pretty good. Since we don't have to put it up for a vote at town meeting, if we can get a truck before town meeting, so that it, our process is ahead of that- so that it, our process is ahead of that, because a lot of towns have to vote on it at town meeting. So then by the time they vote on it and then they get their slot with the upfitter, if we can make sure that that comes together, like in the middle of the winter, just before town meeting, so we can buy a truck and have a slot in with the upfitter, we can kind of get a jump on them. And that, that worked out pretty good with that last Mack that we bought. We, we were, we were able to buy it early enough. So we, we, we got early an up, an earlier outfit because a lot of the towns wait and go through the, the voting, voting process, but we don't have to because of the way our town is set up. And I don't even understand exactly all the details why, but Keith, Keith explained that.
You know, I can get with Dale and we can talk over the specs of the existing trucks we have and, uh, you know, see which truck we, which make we've had the best luck with and get some prices. And see if we can get these dealers to respond.
Yeah. Right.
I mean, it's, it's still a challenge.
I'm sure.
Yeah, it'll be a waiting period.
But if we, you know, if we're, if we're a little in advance of it so that we could get one, get one, I mean, you know better than anybody around on, on that whole process. So, but I just happen to think of it and.
Yeah, we can get that ball.
Keep it on the radar, so.
Just see which, you know, which Sanders work best and, you know, what's the, the best setup that we've got, that we've had the best luck with and, and, uh, go with that. What would, what did you think was the, the best setup that we had? One of the Macks or the Internationals or?
Um, I personally think the International, just from my state perspective of them. Of course, they're not set up as heavy as a, as a municipal truck for a town because they, they don't have to be, but, um.
Have you had issues with that truck because of that? Because it wasn't as heavy?
The International?
Yeah.
No, not for what they did, but they're not hauling as heavy material. The state doesn't haul as much, you know, they'll, they made two buckets. When I worked for the state, you know.
We have an International as well.
Yeah, and actually that's a pretty good truck. It's just.
It's been more dependable than the Max?
Well, they've all got their problems. I didn't see it when it was newer. That truck's got some age on it now and it's, it's getting tired.
It's like 12 years old. They've, they've really monkeyed around with them a lot in 12 years.
You know, and.
The emissions are much better on the new ones as well.
Yeah.
That 2012 to 2016, that was bad years. Um, but the emissions, they haven't got them pretty.
They would regen all the time and then just.
It's much better.
You would sit there. I don't know. A lot of towns are buying the Internationals and I haven't, you know, we haven't talked to any of them, but.
For a long time, that, that Max Force was, was just a terrible, terrible engine.
Yeah, and that's what deterred everyone from going to them. So it's. Well, you know, you could look at them.
Part of it is where, where we get dealers too, you know, how.
Who can get them? Right. Who can get them for us? And we lost the Mack dealer up in northern Vermont. So I think Albany Mack is the closest dealer for Mack now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get started and see what.
We gotta keep, keep thinking about it.
You know, sometimes some of these dealers, they put trucks together where, you know, if they were kind of close on the specs, it, you might be able to get one all set up. I don't know about this time of year or.
Which type Sander do you prefer?
I think you gotta go with the side dump.
Which one works best with that crushed stone that we want to put on the dirt roads? Cause that's an issue.
The one that, that center drive with the conveyor that's on the, the 13 Mack, the tub box.
That works the best with that coarse stone?
I think so. A white, it's a wider chain and just.
It doesn't, does it run right out of it?
No, because it comes over and then drops down onto the cross conveyor.
Well, that's a critical component. If we want to continue to use that stone. Cause I know, you know, you guys can, struggled with that stone all the time. So.
I'm not a big fan of, uh, tub body, but I'm not sure if we're using stone, that it might not flow right down to that center conveyor anyway, you know.
But that worked well with the stone?
Yes, it did. It did.
Okay, that's important.
Yeah, absolutely. Trouble is, there's not a lot of options, you know, in Sanders. They just. They're either center conveyor or they're, they're side dumps, basically. So. I know Washington County uses a lot of center conveyors, you know, and they haul a lot of material, blacktop and everything. So.
Good.
Thank you.
Did you get all that in minutes?
Yes. Filed it.
Anything else in the highway? Anybody got anything?
No.
Assessors?
So no report. I got the letter that Jessica drafted that everybody saw. I had asked, um, if Deb could put it onto the letterhead just because I wasn't able to get down here, but I didn't hear back from her and I know that she's away. So I came down and got some letterhead. So I'll take care of that. But no report from the assessor's office.
Perfect. Town clerk, has she got a memo for us?
Yes. Um, there are two fleet excess weight permits to be signed, which I think Bob had. And for approval, there's a request to cater permit for Rubber Boot Farm Incorporated, which is the barn, restaurant and tavern. And that is here for you all to look at. I think you just have to make a motion. Um, as of 4/13, the new hire for the highway department was scheduled for a pre-employment drug test. And Deb is out of the office this week, the 17th through the 20th.
You had the pink boot.
Perry's got it.
I got it right here.
Oh, you got it?
Yep.
Raise the party.
The barn.
Oh, is it, this is just the cater permit so that they can go anywhere. It's not specific. Okay.
Oh, no, it's at the West Polit Volunteer Fire Department.
Yeah.
Yep. On April 22nd?
April 22nd.
So we gotta get that done now.
Yeah. Somebody want to make a motion to approve the?
I move that we approve this request to cater permit. For.
West Polit Fire Department's annual.
I'll second that.
Is more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
I'll take these online now.
No.
Drinking age was 14. Back when I started in the fire department, I think drinking age was 14.
You're dating yourself.
I was just thinking about it. All those years ago, those parties were something. Phew. Talk about community involvement 50 years ago. Okay.
Aging of the juniors in the West Ball Fire Department has been a good project to invest in, I think, over the years. Don't you think Mike, that, that the junior fire department was well aged?
It was, there was a lot going on. People had a lot more time back then.
And you have to go to 170 courses or something, is it now for the fire department to certify?
Any more, uh, anything on the, the town clerk's memo?
No, that was it.
Town treasurer's memo.
So from Julie, there are two warrants this week. Payroll is $9,847.57 and accounts payable is $23,096.63. General fund money is $14,734.23. Highway fund, $7,370.55 and wastewater is $10,839.42. Last week, we received the quarterly class two and three road state aid deposit of $25,287.02. And that's submitted by Julie and there are two motions for payroll warrant 23056, for 984757 and payroll, accounts payable warrant 230572309663.
All right. I'll move that we approve both these warrants.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Anything from the emergency management?
Yes, Bob Marlino, uh, sent a request. I think I for, I did forward it to you all. Um, he requested to use the town hall auditorium on Tuesday, May 9th for a CPR and first aid class. And he requested that the, um, waiver, he requested to waive the fee.
Do we need a motion or just a consensus?
I'll make a motion to waive the fee.
And approve it. Okay.
I'll second.
Is that open to the public?
I don't know. It's a good question. Um, let me tell you. Hold on.
I guess there would be a message to this.
It's for the Polit Fire Department.
For the Fire Department, okay. Either way, it still makes sense. So motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay. Jennifer's report was intermingled with the zoning administrator. So she's gone. Wastewater treatment, Jake put in the new heater last week. So that's all working really good. Still working on generators and, and sensors and stuff, trying to get details. We had a guy there that, he's going to come back when, unfortunately, right now, they don't know the pass code to make the transfer switch. You have to break into the transfer switch to tell it to, to switch and go on to generator power. And there's a pass code that gets into it. So they're trying to, trying to find that. I don't know if it's, it should be in the O and M manual or possibly default, but they're working on that. But Mark's going to come back and, and watch as it transfers. He's, he feels that it, it could be just the way some of the, the coils are sensing the, the different loads. And he's optimistic that we may be able to get by without having to replace a complete transfer switch and just a few components or the board or some, some issues. But when he watches it transfer, he'll be able to tell better. And as far as the, uh, the UV sensor, he talked to her about it and they gotta be able to take it out so he can determine the, the rating of it and, and try and get a universal or a, just a standard one with the correct rating. He feels that if he had, he can, once he gets the numbers off of it, he should be able to, to cross it over to something with the right readings and, and stuff like that. He wants to swap them first to make sure that, that the input, that it's not the board itself, that it's the sensor. And he's, he'll work with Jill and, and connect with that. And, uh, other than that, I think we're, everything else is going satisfactory. So. They are still looking for one more part-time person, if anybody has any. Knows if anyone. Anything, let's see, town hall cooling system, we're working on that. I'll get you Jake's number, Perry. Um, Meadowway School Board?
Oh, one more thing for the facilities. I just put it under facilities. The library has booked a summer concert, um, with the Twang Town Paramours on Saturday, July 15th from 7:00 to 8:30. They wanted the board's permission to use the green. Um, and also we're hoping for permission to use the town hall auditorium as a rain, backup rain location. They are also wanting to make sure the board is okay with them getting whatever permits are necessary to block off the roundabout if there are any permits necessary, um, for that night as well.
I wouldn't believe they'd have to get any permits to block that off.
Were needed with general.
So they're just looking for board support?
Yes.
Yeah, it seems fine.
If you're all okay with the auditorium being used.
Go up in the library, whatever works. Charlie?
Uh, I didn't realize it was facilities, but, uh, the library in the children's room has paint coming down from the ceiling. Uh, the right way to do this is to go up in the attic and see if there's a current issue or if past repairs had fixed whatever leak that was. But I was told by the last surviving person that was up in the attic, Bob Marlino, don't go up there. Said a little more emphatically than that. So my thinking is to repair it. RUDS builders talked about setting up scaffolding and my thought was to just, uh, get a 10 or 12 foot step ladder and do it myself. Because if it then, uh, decays again, then we know it's a more serious issue that will require a contractor. Is, does the town have a 10 or 12 foot step ladder by any chance?
I'd be very surprised if they did.
Okay. I have a lead on one from, uh, the aforementioned Jed Rubin. Um, I'll get it from him. All in favor? That's it.
Thank you. Older unfinished business, bike and pedestrian grant, I guess we're at right now.
Oh, I can give an update on that. So last time we just, um, we just reaffirmed that we wanted to have Rutland Regional Planning Commission be the project manager. So I got back to them saying that we did want them to be the project manager. And in particular, it is Stephanie Bork who will be working with, who had sent us her information. Um, so she said that we needed to send her info on to Peter Pochoff at V-Trans. Now, and then he said that I needed to write a letter, well, that we needed to write a letter on town letterhead requesting that Rutland Regional Planning Commission be our project manager. So I just did that and sent it to them.
Okay.
So that's, so now it's in, um, it's in their ballpark to get us the, um, to get us the contract. I think the contract has to go first from Stephanie to, um, V-Trans. And V-Trans has to look at it. And then once V-Trans signs off on it, it comes to us and then we officially sign it. So that's where that's at.
Okay. So we're all, all on track on that?
Yeah, we're on track with that. Um, I have, uh, also I think it should go in unfinished old business. I have a little more update about that. Um, municipal energy resilience project, I think is what the acronym stands for. It's MERP, which is a great acronym. That's the program to upgrade the town buildings with weatherization and energy efficiency. And I went to a webinar this morning about it. Um, it's being run by the Department of Buildings and General Services, which runs the state buildings and they've upgraded a bunch of the state buildings to make them more energy efficient. And this is basically them overseeing the same thing, getting done for municipal buildings. This is the program that we've already put in with Rutland Regional Planning Commission that we wanted to do the library first and the town hall second as our options. Um, and so this, this was just a webinar with, um, more information about it. Um, the first thing that's going to happen is that we're going to have a walkthrough assessment, hopefully of both buildings at some point this summer or fall. And this is completely paid for by the state. So we don't have to pay anything for it. They have four contractors that we're working with and they'll come through. And in the buildings, they'll look at the lights, they'll look at the type of heating and cooling, they'll look at the electrical panel. There's a number of other things they'll look at. Because this is a walkthrough assessment, they won't do a full blower test with ceiling off the door and everything. But after that, then they'll give a report back. And once they give the report back, then we will be able to apply for the full grant, which can be up to $500,000. And I believe this is a no-match grant, which is great for us. Um, I also found out something which is great for us because both of these buildings are historic register buildings. I also found out something which is great for us because both of these buildings are historic register buildings. For this project, the Department of Buildings and General Services is gonna be working directly with Historic Preservation, so, with the Preservation Trust, to, so that we can do an expedited process of getting any of the changes approved, which is great, because they understand that a lot of municipal buildings are historic buildings. The continual timeline on these grants is the assessments will be done this year. And they don't know exactly when the grant application will come out. But we will have to obligate the grant money by the end of 2024. And we will have to expand the grant money by the end of 2026. Now, they understand that contractors are in short supply. So, if the contractors aren't available before the end of 2026, you can actually do the work later, as long as you've expended the money earlier. So, I guess you could pay the contractor upfront and then they could do the work the next year. So, they're, they're trying to make it flexible.
Wow, what a deal.
Yeah, I don't know. But anyhow, it's, this is, this is one of the grants that locally Politt is high on the list. There's like four levels of, there's four levels of how, what they call energy burdened towns are. And we're not in the highest level, but we're in the second highest level of energy burdened towns. This is a thing that, that Efficiency Vermont put out some years ago. And it has to do with the, how much people are paying for, for their heating and cooling and energy costs and electric compared to how much they make in our town. So, because our town doesn't have a really high average income, which sort of translates to property values as well, we're gonna be high on the list for, for this program. So, that's the update on that. It all seems real positive.
And that's the one that Barbara is...
Yep, that's the one that Barbara's working with and that we already put in the info with.
Jessica, it's perfect to be running point on this project.
Excellent.
I am, I'm pretty hopeful about it. They, they talked a lot about how many of these upgrades they wanna do aren't sexy upgrades, but it's a lot having to do with the building envelope. Like making sure that the doors and windows are tight, that there's no leakage, that all the insulation is up to snuff, so that when you upgrade any of the heating and cooling systems, they'll be really efficient. And I know Frank, this is right up your bailiwick. You always want the best insulation.
I can give half on here if you need help, but I don't usually, you know, there's some stuff that pops up along.
Oh, I know. You'll, you'll just be pleased that the insulation is getting done.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah.
And Barbara, by the way, works for Rutland Regional Planning.
Yep, she does. So, yeah, that's, that's my, that's my report on that.
So, being in the front end of this, with Barbara in the front end and Politt in the front end and money maybe not being as much in the front end, and they're giving this option, it's a good thing that we have Jessica on, on point here. We can get some money out of it, hopefully, hopefully?
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
I have one thing.
So, I sent you an email today, forwarded you about the CUD?
Yep, that's on the docket.
That's on the docket.
Yes, I've got one other thing too. We're getting a lot of bookkeeping done tonight. This is great.
Super.
So, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission would like for us to sign off on our Transportation Advisory Committee Certification and Board of Commissioners for July 1, 2023, through June 30th of 2024. They've sent me a bunch of emails, like we're very tardy at this. But then I looked at the date and I was like, we're right on time. So, I figured John and Harley would probably love to continue.
I think we already...
We already did this.
This is just the paperwork for it, right?
Yes, so I've filled it all out and then Mike, they would like your autograph on both of those.
Thank you.
And then they also sent, they sent their, what do they call it? Their, their data certificates about all the different positions in town. And they're all quite outdated, like they still have Ed Cleveland and Chuck Whedon and John Malcolm. That's the board that they still have. So, I'm just gonna go through that and make sure that those are all up to date as well, so. Look at them, all that stuff.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, so the Otter Creek CUD.
Same thing. We need to sign that I'm appointed to the Otter Creek CUD.
Thank you.
And that has to be returned to me, so.
So, you'll handle that?
I'll handle returning that to me.
Okay. So, good.
You're all right along. Any new business?
I have two things in new business. One is another bit of money that I just heard about and I wanted to put on everybody's radar. There is this program called Municipal Technical Assistance. And I have it pulled up on my phone here. This is a program by the Agency of Administration. What they're trying to, and the legislature voted these funds. They're trying to allow smaller towns to get municipal technical assistance in order... They're intended to assist communities with a high need for state and federal grants, but lower capacity for accessing and applying for those sources.
It's us.
Yeah, that's exactly us. And the lucky part of it is that they, they use this thing called the Vermont Community Index to evaluate the needs of communities across the state. And any municipalities in the top 25%, that's us, are pre-approved. So, I'm gonna get in touch with Rutland Regional Planning Commission and see what we need to do. But, and how much money this is. But basically, we are on the list of pre-approved towns in Rutland County. Who, so we will get money toward like paying for people to write grants for us. So, that might allow us to apply for some like...
We'll be rolling in it.
It might allow us to apply for some more complicated, like federal rural assistance grants that we, we are a rural area and would qualify for. They're just a lot of paperwork. So, yep.
This is very exciting.
So, yeah, so in Rutland, it's like us and Middletown Springs, Benson, Ira, Mount Tabor, Pittsfield, Tinmouth, and West Haven are the ones who automatically, yeah. So, we're, we're, we're in their company there, so I will look more into that. But that's, that just got approved. So, that's one thing. And the other, the other thing is I got a phone call, which I just wanted to let you all know about, from someone from the Rupert Select Board, who is putting together an informal meeting of some folks from Rupert, from Dorset, and from Politt to look at, there's this property on Highway 30. When you go down past the yellow farm, it's currently like a dog park. I don't know if folks know where that is. I, I had to be, like, do a double take to figure out where it was. Yeah, yeah. And evidently, there is some, like, people in Rupert are trying to think about, I guess it's just over the line, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it's in Rupert.
Yeah, it's in Rupert. They're trying, but they wanna talk to the local municipalities to see what they might be able to do regarding recreation there that could benefit all of our communities. Like make there be more recreational opportunities.
Like a pickleball court.
Yeah.
No? Okay, well.
Evidently, right now, evidently, right now, it's mostly a dog park, but they don't really want it to just continue being a dog park. So, I'm going to be just going down there to have a, be part of this meeting on the 28th, and I'll report back. It's kind of just a brainstorming session, I guess, so find out what Rupert's up to.
Harley?
It isn't clear who actually owns that land. I, I don't think it's public. I heard that, but I heard that from a neighbor.
So, it always gets voted on. It's a 401(c) whatever corporation.
Yes, but I'm not sure. I just don't know. It would be an interesting question.
That may be something that's gonna get brought up about.
Yes.
I, I told, I told them, I'm like, I know nothing about the history of this property. And they said, great, we could use at least one pair of new eyes on this. So, I said, okay, sure. Like, just so you know, I, I don't know the history.
Clarence Decker orchestrated it and maintained it somewhat for, for a few years. And then where it went from there, I'm not sure.
You're probably gonna have one person there that's gonna wanna shut the gate on it, so.
Well, we'll, we'll see what...
I can almost guarantee you.
What everybody, what everybody thinks.
Probably an owner, right?
Yeah, I think he does.
Yeah.
He owns it?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. I think, I think the land was given by the previous owner and then, so.
So, then Jessica's going as an informative party from the select board, but not a representative of the select board?
Well, there's...
Informative.
It's not, it's not a particularly official meeting. It's just sort of a, let's all go down there and brainstorm.
Yeah.
And, and nobody's having any quorums. You know, they're sending like one person from each group, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, I told them, I told them I'd let everybody else know about it. We'll see, we'll see what happens.
See what it comes out to.
Yep.
Good, thank you. Yes.
I just was hoping to get permission, so my computer is like, uh, just being a little funny. So, I talked to Vinnie today and he said that he would be able to take a look at it. So, I'm not sure what the town, like what our contract is or what fees are associated with that. But I was hoping that's okay with everybody.
Isn't that your own personal computer?
No, this is the town's.
Well, if it's the town's, the town should fix it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I wouldn't ask you to fix my own.
Well, no, I, I just thought.
But if you're using yours, her.
I did use, I don't, I was going to tonight. I used mine for like four years before we got that to do Zoom. But this one we got, because when I first started in 2018, I, the computer crashed like immediately after I started, so we got this one. So, this one's like, I don't know, five years old maybe. But I only use it to take minutes and like, you know, it's very low impact. So, I don't know why it's super, super slow. And today I did an update and like everything stopped working. So, then I tried to undo the update and I got it to, it's limping along, freezing up like quite frequently. But, so he said that I'm gonna meet him down here at some point this, later this week. And he said he'll take a look at it and hopefully clean it up for me, but.
I mean, if it's gonna cost too much to fix at this point, you might as well just get a new one, because if it's five years old, that's, that's like getting up there for a laptop.
I know.
They, they want it, it's ended, oh, that's 'cause everybody else quit. Everybody else there quit.
Nope, they all left.
That's funny.
We don't have anybody in the audience. That's why.
All right.
They went to bed.
I guess we weren't that exciting tonight.
We're gonna be done, I think, so, you know, we can go to bed too.
Interesting, okay.
So, yes, please get your computer fixed or replaced.
Yeah, I'll let you all know what happens with it. He was like very concerned when I said that none of the Microsoft stuff was working and then I somehow got it to work. I did a lot of Googling and like muttering to myself and maybe that just did it, I don't know. But it, it is working now. And I'll ask him about your alternate programs you always tell me about. But that's right. So, I'll let you all know. Thank you.
Any other new business? Any public comment?
One is Michael at Regrowth Planning. You saw his little presentation. He's dedicated a lot of effort to it. And some of the meetings he's personally blaspheming especially is, I don't know if he's feeling downhearted about the attendance level, but he might be a little, I wonder what your feeling is on it, Jessica, but, but this draft, when he's moving the fire trucks out of the area and opening a larger area. So, we can do anything to promote that better.
That's this Thursday.
Yeah. That would be good to get wheeling along and, and congratulations to some of the planning commission members here who, we got the Zoom thing going and it really enhanced the planning commission being. So, we're doing good. So, whatever you do, we get the benefit of, because if we affect this, right?
What?
Whatever you're talking about, the computers change, would affect this too, probably?
Uh, no, this is its own.
It, this is plug and play.
This is just ready to look.
You love it?
Do I love it?
Yes.
Yeah, love it. So much, yeah.
But, but Michael is, you know, he's poured a lot of effort into this and, and some of the issues are gonna be tops on the, you know, you got the intersection, the freight building, asphalt levels, general run of the mill of the town buildings, future projects. They're all wrapped up in this thing. And the floor is open for adding more to it. So, this would be a good thing for anybody to mention, to go by and see, drop in if they wanted to, help, help with the enthusiasm and, and education of it. Because we got some money for it and we got Michael. Michael's the best, I'll tell you, that we could have possibly gotten. He is more than worth his money on this, if you've been to any of his presentations.
You know he is.
Good?
Yeah, I just, we got every issue, sure. If any hasn't, if any hasn't shown up, they should probably just save a little bit of time and go.
Your turn.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? I have a second too. Period it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carried.